That's another 25%.
That's a good point.
We're ready when you're ready.
Okay.
I got it, recording, ready to roll.
Okay, welcome everybody, thank you for all showing up, we're gonna start the RDC meeting for July 9th, 2025. Call to order, roll call of members, Zach? Here. 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 Thank you, we have a quorum. An amendment of agenda, I don't believe there is anything, anybody, no? Okay, approval of minutes, you guys all read the minutes from last meeting?
Make sure your microphone.
Oh, any little green lights on, make sure. Any questions regarding the minutes? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the minutes from the May 14th meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signal saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aries. Consideration approval of claims, we have two claims brought before us tonight, one is for Baker Tiller, Baker Tilly, for the, um, the presentation of the TIFF for the last meeting, this is for $8,343.59. The second claim we have is for Zach, for his services of $576. Questions for either one of those? Seeing none. He has a motion.
Make a motion to prove it.
Both?
Yep. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Aries. Great, line through this tonight. Alright.
Okay, before you go too much further though, I have the, there are three claims that you guys pre-approved, um, for the full board to approve, that was for the Durangos, the, drones, and the AEDs, I believe.
I did not.
Yeah.
What, do you remember what the amounts were, Susan?
Um, yeah, so one Durango was 57, 770, 50, then there was 59, 270, 50. The drones were 13,629, and the AEDs were 16, 749, 45.
Were any of those different than what was in the resolution?
No, we're not even to those amounts yet, yeah, on any of the projects, yeah.
So they, we, uh, they were all consistent with what we had said, um, they fall within our budget of what we pre-approved for it, so they were pre-approved, so, all we need to do is then, um, so we as a, the RDC, have to approve it, we've already pre-approved it, but, yeah, so, we can do all four in total, right, make a motion to do so.
I move to approve, uh, all four of the expenditures that Susan just presented to us.
Second it.
Seeing a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aries, okay, so those are all now approved officially. Anything else, Susan? Can I jump in? Got it off, good, thanks. Alright, Concord Township Fire Department.
Good evening, Brad Johnson with Concord Township Fire, um, so I'm back to answer any questions and go over, um, our proposal that we submitted, uh, eight weeks ago, for our project to acquire a rescue, a fire rescue ATV, um, and the accompanying trailer to transport that. I, Mr. Good, I gave you, or I sent you an email about two hours ago, I apologize for the late hour, were you able to see that? Alright, I planned for that, um, I obtained, I've been talking with, um, the safety board at Steel Dynamics, and then I also reached out to New Millennium, since those are the two businesses in the TIFF district, I've not heard anything back from New Mill, but I have heard, um, from Steel Dynamics, I've got a letter that I'll give you guys to review from SDI, and then this comes from Garrett Page, he's the director of safety operations out there.
Thank you.
And then I'll give you guys just a moment to review that, I apologize for kinda springing this on you, it's just a matter of timing.
I understand. Brad, um, so in reading this letter, um, this makes it sound as though you guys provide support for SDI?
We do, so we're, we're in the automatic mutual aid agreement for Butler Fire, any major event that goes on at SDI, we get dumped the exact same as they do, we're toned out at the same time, even though we're not the, the primary jurisdiction for Steel Dynamics, major incidents, there's a mutual aid agreement that we are in their first alarm to respond to the property.
Great. That was a question I had asked you in the last meeting, so that's what I needed to have answered, great. Okay, um, so you got all the information from them, they are requesting?
We modified, I sent out an email, we modified our number.
Uh-oh.
Just because of the availability of, of different things, so I've been in discussions with Chief Mosteller at Butler Fire, um, Mr. Page out at SDI, and like I said, I reached out to New Mill, but I never, I never heard back from their safety person, um, we kinda changed things up on the UTV itself, rather than just being a pure fire apparatus, um, we modified the drop-in unit to be a fire rescue skid, um, it's a little bit smaller water tank, it's a little bit smaller fire pump, but it adds a place to mount a rescue litter, or a backboard for victim extrication and rescue. On the SDI property itself, about 40 to 45% of the property is undeveloped, and not accessible directly by road, um, there's a little over a mile and a quarter of ditch bank on the property, depending on the water levels, it's anywhere from 15 feet deep to five feet deep, it depends on, on the flow rate, so we kind of modified our, our unit itself to be accessible for victim rescue. I have two incidents in mind that we sort of, working with Mr. Page, we came up with this, there was an incident in the rail yard a couple of years ago, late at night, um, one of their railroad crews fell off of a train car that was in motion, he was run over by that car and suffered an amputation to the lower leg, there was about a 10-minute delay in emergency care to him, because none of the, the ambulance, the fire trucks could not access where the victim was, in the rail yard itself, they actually had to use one of the golf carts that SDI has on the property, to scoop him up, and then drive him to a place where EMS could access him. By having a rescue litter on a small UTV like this, we would have been able, had we had it at the time, we would have been able to access the rail yard, and get into that trickier, um, particular part of the property, to access that patient. There was another incident involving a car accident on the south side of the SDI property at State Road 8, um, where an individual drove through the perimeter fence, and then ended up going, I think it was 1,000 feet through a field, and down into a ditch embankment, um, law enforcement was on scene, fire rescue was on scene, and EMS was on scene, nobody could find this person, uh, they ended up using GPS coordinates from the cell phone, through our 911 dispatch center, to figure out exactly where the person was, and then the only way they could retrieve, it ended up being an elderly female and four children, the only way they could retrieve them was to walk them out one by one, um, so again, if we had had a small UTV-type vehicle, we would be able to access that part of the property. Concord Fire also is the only fire department in DeKalb County, that has two certified Indiana search and rescue canines, um, we have a state certified handler, by having a rescue litter mounting area on the, on the unit, it will give us a place to mount a canine kennel, so that if we need to deploy the dog for a search, such as this incident that happened in the middle of the night, we can secure the, the canine kennel to that rescue litter, and then transport the handler and the dog out into wherever, um, to initiate the search. Because of, because of the changes that we made, the quote for the UTV actually decreased just shy of $3,000, um, so the old, the old spec was 59,108.98, uh, the new one is now 56,993.98. On the other hand, the trailer that we had, um, obtained a temporary agreement or hold to purchase, sold because it was only a 30-day hold, um, so the next closest trailer that we found is now in Decatur, and that one is about $3,000 more than what the old quote was, so in the long run, we took 3,000 off of the unit, but then we have to put it back on in the trailer, so the overall cost of the project in the last eight weeks has gone up about $500, and that's just things that were out of our control.
Okay, so we're showing a total request of 69,192.98?
That is correct.
That's correct.
And that will be for the unit to be assembled and delivered by Polaris Government and Defense, and then the trailer we would have to go and obtain ourselves.
Any other questions for him?
I, I have two questions, um, in your proposal, the John Deere Gator is like $6,000 less, I understand.
Yes.
Cheaper's not better, um, so I'm not, but what, what is it about the Polaris that you like over the, over the?
So, the Polaris is a more capable machine, it has double the horsepower, and it has a higher payload capacity, so if we're piling four guys in gear onto this unit, plus the weight of the water, the skid unit and back, and if we're doing a victim rescue, 200, 250 pounds, you know, whatever, the John Deere unit is a solid unit, but it doesn't have the same weight capacity or horsepower rating that the Polaris does.
Okay, then my second question is in regards to the trailer, um, is there time to wait? I, I, I think your first quote was from Jason Deitch.
Yes, over in Edgerton.
So can he get you another one, can they order another one at this?
I'm sure we could order one, but it would be a, a custom deal, so I don't have a quote for, for that.
Okay.
Would that be something you're interested in doing?
I could, yeah, but I don't know, I don't know if I'm gonna have the same quota, you know, the market changes, I don't know what that quote would be, so I, what I've submitted to you tonight is what I have solid numbers in hand.
Okay.
How would you guys store it, would it just stay?
It would stay in our station.
Ready to go in the trailer?
Yep, yep, it would be stored, ready for deployment.
How'd you guys transport it?
We would park, so right now we also have a fire rescue boat, that we deploy on the river or in, um, area ponds, the way that we park our apparatus, we have essentially a double-deep apparatus bay, all the trucks line up, um, underneath where the overhead doors are, and then there's an entire second half of the building, behind all of the trucks, so what we do, and we have to deploy the boat during rainy season, when we can get on the river, we put the boat and trailer right behind our brush truck, which is a Dodge 2500, so that if we need to deploy the boat, it's just as simple as dropping it on the hitch and driving straight out of the building, we would do something similar with this, if the unit would be on the trailer, the trailer would be in line with that truck, but all we have to do is drop it down onto the hitch and away we go.
I can just add, to expound on your first question that is in chief tenet, um, that's on, there also is a, is a much larger ground clearance on the Ranger, um, Garrett does have a Ranger very similar to the one, um, that they're requesting, um, I think theirs is a little bit bigger than ours, um, we have the same firefighting, rescue personnel combo, and we have to dump all the water out of our tank to put a person on there, because of the weight of the person, make, and the weight of the water makes it heavier than what the Ranger can even do, so if now you're asking that John Deere Gator to do it, you're just not gonna, you're just not gonna have the capacity, so the, the Polaris, even though it's not made for this technically situation, that's the best option.
Payload and the ground clearance.
Yeah, the payload, the ground clearance and everything, that is the best option for that.
I want to be clear, you guys do, or, what I'm trying to ask is, if there's an emergency at SDI, you guys are on the same call as Butler?
Not all the time, no, it depends on the type of incident, if it's a, if it's a high-acuity run, yes, we get dumped as automatic mutual aid, or just like a general, call it a fire alarm, or someone's having chest pains or difficulty breathing, we don't go on those. It's just for, it's just for those higher intensity stuff where that automatic mutual aid kicks in.
And Butler does not have the same apparatus?
No, Butler does not have anything remotely close to this, um, their closest size-wise would be a 1978 Dodge pickup.
Yeah, and we just did the brush truck for that.
Right, we did the brush truck, yeah.
Yeah, which is, but it's not the same as what this is.
No, no, it's completely different.
Okay.
Zach, does this qualify in your opinion, or, well, does this meet the qualifications that we're, well, supposed to abide by?
I mean, it, it, from what he's presented, the discussion, um, I'd say it's closer than I felt it was at the last meeting, I think the commission has to make the call on, does this benefit the economic development area, the, the area where the funds are coming out of, um, and so, I, I think the considerations are, if you think it does, we do, we have to, you know, someone has to make a finding, and agree that that's, that's the case, um, I think the, the potential concern to be aware of is, great to have, obviously you can do a lot of good with it, how much time is it going to be used for things that are not part of the, the TIFF area? That doesn't mean it doesn't benefit, that doesn't mean you couldn't, you can't approve it, um, it's, it's a little bit, it's a little bit tough, because, you know, it would make, it would be a much easier decision, or much easier justification if it was Butler asking for it, since they are the responder, but Butler doesn't have this piece of equipment, and, uh, based on what SDI is saying, something like this would be a huge benefit to them in their opinion, um, so, I, I think it, it can meet the test, it's, it's, but it's ultimately up to what all of you think, I mean, the, the standard is just it has to benefit.
Has to benefit, doesn't it, has to 100% benefit, has to benefit.
Brad, you gave us some great examples of where it would have benefited in the past, um, do you, do you have, I'm a data guy, do you have some more detailed data, or could you get in detail data, let's say Concord Fire Department had 300 calls last year, and 30 of them were to the SDI property, or TIFF district property, you know what I mean? Do you have that available?
I don't have that readily available.
Yeah, I knew you wouldn't have that.
With some digging, yeah, I could come up with that, but I do not have that readily available.
Okay.
In your estimation, how many would you?
I would say a dozen calls a year, we end up at the SDI property.
Okay.
Sometimes more, sometimes less, it's, it's difficult, it's difficult to say.
And of those dozen, we're gonna, we're gonna drill down a little further, how many of them would use this UTV, you think?
I can't say, I honestly can't give you an example of that, just because we have to make that decision based on the information that comes in.
Right, right, I understand.
But in this, in this conversation, we're also talking about not just SDI, but the, the area that's affected by the TIFF district, in other words, those are funds that would have went to that tax area, so, this, this apparatus can be helping all of the people in Butler, Wilmington, the surrounding townships, that, still same result, that we would be taking those tax dollars, and it's benefiting not just going to SDI, but other people in that community as well.
The conversations I had with Chief Mosteller and Butler revolve more around the community at large, um, I know in the last, in my last meeting with you guys, I had brought up the hundreds of miles of railroad that are inaccessible, that really a small vehicle like this is the only way to get back to the actual railroad, um, Chief Mosteller told me that we needed to make this presentation as a community-wide benefit, I was under the impression via email with, with Mr. Good, that I needed to narrow my scope to the TIFF district itself, so that's how I focus my presentation here tonight.
And that's, I like the angle, I like where you're going with that, but ultimately, while, while it can have additional benefit, you know, it's, it's like, you know, when, when it came two months ago, it was about supporting the Butler Fire Department, well, that's not what we're, that's not what we're really supposed to be funding, it's supporting the TIFF, so those extra potential benefits are great, but if, but you can't, that can't outweigh, if, if you don't believe that it's bene, if it's a true benefit to the, the economic development, the TIFF area, then the fact that it would benefit the public, the community at large, isn't really applicable, that's kinda gotta be the first, do, do we think it, um, benefits the TIFF area, and, and there's, there, there isn't, there isn't necessarily guidance that says it can only be used in that area, it ju, it just has to benefit, it has to, we have to be able to justify why the funds would be used, and that it does benefit the TIFF area.
So our test, I think, and how I read it, our test is, would this benefit that district? Yes or no? If it's, if it's yes, then, if it also benefits the community at large, that's fantastic.
Well, the yes or no becomes a little fuzzy in my mind, I start thinking about how much additional rail traffic is servicing SDI, and that, those, those rail accesses are out of the TIFF district, but they're, they're there, and they're, you know, they're, they're part of that growth in that area.
Right, right, I, I, and I'm gonna tell you, I equate this to what we did, um, the last couple meetings with the Butler Police Department, um, with buying them the Durangos, you know, they provide secondary service behind the Sheriff's Department to SDI, um, but they do provide service to that, and it benefits, and we determined that was a benefit, so, um, I think that he's qualified this with, if they're making 12 runs to SDI, if SDI has given us a letter saying this is gonna be a benefit to us, in my mind, I think that I'm, I'm satisfied with them having successfully proven that it's a benefit to the district, um, to our, to our TIFF districts, SDI in particular, so, that's, that's what I was looking for, was that information, and yeah, I do think this is gonna benefit the, the county at large, because, you know, Butler doesn't have this, this apparatus, I don't know even if Auburn has an apparatus like this.
Auburn does have a Ranger, but theirs is more set up for, lack of better terminology, PR, they use it mainly at the county fair, um, for quick response to incidents that happen at the fair, or at the fairgrounds, I don't, and Chief Castator can correct me, I don't know if Auburn has ever deployed it in the field on an emergency, I just don't think that's what they designed theirs to do.
And then, to go back to your quantifying numbers, and, and I hate to say this, but it's, it's a pub, seeing it from a public safety standpoint, he has no idea, I mean, he could make 15 runs in there this year, and zero runs in this year, and, and don't get me wrong, the, the Auburn hazmat thing is gonna be, is a wonderful benefit for Garrett having the rail cars go through, but if you ask me how many times we've called Garrett, or Auburn hazmat into Garrett in the last three years, that's zero, but God forbid if I ever have to.
Oh yeah, for sure.
The guys on Garrett aren't certified to do what the Auburn Fire Department is gonna do, so it's just that insurance policy, and I hate to say that, you know, you, you can't really say that I'm not gonna buy it because you're only making 12 runs, or we're gonna buy it because we're making 12 runs, it's sort of that insurance policy, and it's, it's sort of the same thing, it's all, like I said, don't get me wrong, I, that Auburn Center is, is a wonderful asset to all the TIFF districts, but the amount of times we're gonna use it, hopefully, will be never, so.
Yeah, I just thought if it was readily available data, it'd be an easy data point, if it's not, it's not.
Yeah, I just don't have that with me, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's fine.
Mr. Johnson, if we prove something like this, is there, is there some way that you could connect with Garrett, maybe schedule go out there every two or three months, go over the property, I, I mean, get yourself familiar with it, because that.
Oh, yeah, you're, yes.
You know, above and beyond the community.
We've done that in the past, we've done safety walkthroughs, it's just a matter of reaching out and then scheduling a time that works with them, and a time that works with us, um, usually we end up out there at least once a year to do exactly what you're asking, we usually go out there once a year just literally for a safety walkthrough, to be, have an explanation of the different lines, the different parts of the buildings, um, we don't make it out into the unimproved portions of the property, just because of, it's not economical for us to walk that far.
But with this, it is, right?
Yes, this would be something that would be very easy, especially since they have golf carts and little, I think they use Kawasaki's, but they have little ATVs of their own, yeah, this would be something that we could drive around with them, and they could show us the different access points and the different, yeah.
So if, if SDI was in your district, would you want this apparatus?
Yeah, we've, we've had other instances, like he's described, we had a, um, car out in the field in the middle of winter, and it was just, the, the, it was undulated enough, you couldn't see it, um, and it was a father and son, who, um, the father had a medical episode, and the son was mentally handicapped, and they just sat in the car, and so to get them back and to get out there, it would have been extremely helpful, and we, not that it's gonna directly affect SDI, but we use it for like the Garrett Heritage Days, and other festival parades that we can, we can throw medical gear on there, and then we're right there already, um.
Kinda like Auburn does with.
Yeah, kinda like the fair thing, so, I mean, I know that's not a direct benefit for SDI, but, um, it, it is a big benefit, and especially, like I said, I mentioned the rail, the rail car, um, we've had three instances that I can remember where there's been a rail incident, and the engineers called it in, and we've had to travel half a mile down, down the rail from the nearest intersection, and we've had to walk it, so, that would be a great benefit for that.
Yeah, just, I mean, due to the nature of emergency services, it's, it's like he said, we're an insurance policy more than anything, it's a, hope you never have to use it, but you have it if you do.
Yep.
The north half of the SDI property, the northwest entire area, um, has very large earthen mounds that they mow with full-size tractors and batwing mowers, heaven forbid something happened and a tractor rollover, Butler Fire would not be able to necessarily access that point, because of the high fences and then the steep terrain, it's, there's any number of nightmare scenarios that can be thrown out, there were, something like this would be useful.
That's a high-risk area out there, for sure, there's a lot of area. There's a lot of area.
More questions for Brad? Leon, do you have any?
No, I'm good.
Um, any comments from the public? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Brad.
Okay, so we have a, the funding request is for $69,192.98. Um, the, I think the test that we discussed was, does it benefit SDI? What are your thoughts and do you think that they've satisfied that requirement?
Comfortable with that.
You're comfortable, good, good?
Yes.
I, I like Pete's comment on the rail traffic that serves SDI. An issue, even if it's outside of that area, it, it does impact them and it is, so it is a benefit to them if, if they can assist in that. So it just kinda adds some additional, um, that benefit doesn't have to be right in that area, it just has to benefit them. So, uh, that, I think is another point in that favor.
Okay. Motion? Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the $69,192.98 for approval of this project.
Oh, second.
What funds?
Okay, so we have a first and a second for $69,192. And then of that, we've got three districts that we can pull from, American Heritage, SDI, New Millennium. Um, I think that with where Concord is at, New Millennium and SDI in my mind are the two. I don't know that they would service American Heritage. Um, and I don't know that they would need it there. Doug?
No, I mean, we, we have ours. There'd be an off chance that, but more than likely, by the time they would come that distance, it would probably be resolved for what we would need it for.
Okay. Um, and then looking at our operating statement, for funding-wise, um, for our operating budget, looks like we have, um, for SDI, 74, $740,000 left?
So, the blue line that says actual current cash balance, 739,387.29. That is the actual cash in the fund as of today.
Okay.
We have funds committed out of that, don't we?
So, so if we look.
Just haven't paid yet.
If you look at the bottom of the cash with approved projects so far, at the end of 2025, cash balance is 639,000?
Estimated.
Okay, and that'd be for all three combined?
No, that was just with SDI and New Millennium.
That is just SDI and New Millennium?
If you go into your other page that I have provided you for the budgets, it shows, um, them separated and I have like the amounts between SDI and New Millennium left to pay for the fire trucks, I think, um, allocated, so you can kinda see where those will put you if that all gets paid out of next year.
Okay, so with that, so just looking at this quickly, the blue numbers on the right. So 739,000 is roughly what we'll have left?
That's what I'm proposing that we budget, um, for the coming year to be able to spend it. I was just saying those are the amounts, like the 377, 370, that still needs to come out of each SDI and New Millennium. That isn't, hasn't come out yet.
Those are actual cash val, balances. And next year we'll have to pay another 370 out of that number, is that what you're saying?
The actual cash balances is the last blue line on this page.
Yep.
And then, um, the line items that say equipment, brush, truck, those both say 377, 370, 50 in each of those funds. Those are what is remaining yet to come out of these. And then like each of them have 110, 280 remaining to come out for hazmat facility.
All right, so as I'm reading this, I'm going back to this other sheet, Susan. You've got cash balance of 1.355 million, minusing all those expenses, leaves us an estimated cash balance in the year of 639,000. So, right now we're looking at, with all of our projects being paid and everything, we should have a remainder of 639 in the SDI and New Millennium TIFs.
Was the lead time on these all, this would all be done this year? The, the UTV, would it be done this year? Okay, so it's not a, like, not like a fire truck where it's a year lead time? Okay.
Okay. I'm just making sure that we have money in those two accounts to be able to appropriate properly. Okay, so we're looking at roughly 640,000 in the year based on everything else we've done?
Well, that's based on the red numbers, the amounts there for the hazmat tanker, brush, police department. So it doesn't have the full, like, there's still 754,000, 741 that still will be paid for the fire trucks. That, that's not in there because that wasn't going to be planned to pay out in '25. So, yes, the 639 is an estimate of what we'd have at the end of this year, but you still have these other amounts that have been pledged to come out.
Okay.
And those aren't on here, okay.
When we first did that bottom part of it, that was just trying to see where the, if we had the money. And so we didn't have the full, everything.
Okay, so.
But yes, you would have the money.
Okay. And just roughly, is it seven, 640,000? 640,000?
Is the estimate of what we'll have left.
Okay, and then we have another 750,000 to pay over the next couple of years out of those two districts.
Well, it'd be split apart.
It'd be split apart, I understand, but.
Yeah, it'd be split apart.
And then we're gaining another 191,000 every year.
Estimated, yeah.
Estimated.
But you have to take the rest of the fire trucks out of the, well.
754. The 754,000. Okay, so I'm just running just very, very rough numbers, obviously, 640,000. Um, if I deduct the 754,000 and then I add in the 191,000, that leaves us 76,000 positive, assuming that all comes out next year with the 754.
It's getting us tight.
It's getting tight.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then, yeah, it's minus 69.
Just real quick, John, you took the 639 plus the 191, subtracted the 754, or if it all came out next?
Yep, yeah, now I think our plan was it was supposed to come out over the next two years.
A little more time on that.
Yeah, so if you add another 191,000 on top of that.
Do we remember what the fire truck payments were, was it gonna be half next year? I don't remember the timeline on that.
Two to three-year lead time. The final payment wasn't due till it was delivered. I know we were talking 27, 28.
Seven payoff, I think so. Half when the chassis came in on the big truck.
Something like that.
Says delivery will be within 675 days after pre-construction change order approval. And I don't know, I don't think they've put the down payment on that one yet. As far as, I thought that they only did the down payment for the brush truck, which that's what I paid back to the city of Butler because they put it down first, so they could get things moving. I don't believe that the other one has had the down payment yet.
Okay, so, from our numbers we're looking at, we do have the funds available to do that out of those two districts.
Fire truck will be over two years, right? Nothing less than that?
Should not be.
Okay.
But worst-case scenario is if it is, I believe that we're still okay, looking at the numbers.
I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't ordered at the beginning of the year either, so even two, two years should be the middle of 2027.
Then you'd be at another 191 on top of that.
Yes.
For the brush truck, it says that there's 140,000 due, um, when the chassis arrives, which is estimated 14 months from order. I don't know when the order went in, it would've went sometime this year. So that wouldn't be till next year and then another however many days of construction for the rest of it, or we can prepay.
We elected not to because it wasn't.
That's what I thought.
Okay, so the motion on tables, two, motion and a second, is to approve the funds. Um, so the second part of that would just be which funds they would come out of. I'm just making sure we're all on the same page with everything, so, um, you guys all know where the numbers are at. Okay? So, first, first is just we're approving it, the second one is gonna be where it comes out of. This one you kinda all know before we voted on the first one.
Yep.
Okay? Okay, um, any more discussion in the motion? Seeing none, um, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Carries, okay, so we have approved funding for it now. Second part of this is gonna be how do you want to distribute the funds?
Well, gonna do some maths because New Millennium has less in it. At some point, we're, are we gonna bounce up against one?
Do you know that, Susan? You probably don't, break it in part?
What do you want, if you wanna do?
Well, if we say half comes out of.
5% of it out of SDI and 25 out of New, whatever, I mean, whatever it is.
I just wanna make sure that we're not gonna run one of the two accounts negative.
Oh.
Maybe just do a percentage of what, what's available in each one.
How would you like us to do it? What's the?
What works for.
Who, me?
Yeah. I just wanna make sure that we don't bounce anything. We're all good with all that.
All of our other decisions have been half and half, I believe.
I, I think one other thing to consider is approve the funding, we have to figure out where it's coming out of, that's, that's math. We'll have a resolution at our next meeting. How does that work with him holding the prices? Down payments are needed or what have you? I know that one thing said it was good for 25 days, so.
Okay, so distribution of funds too.
Okay, give me a hot second, move on to something else. Give me a hot second and I'll get your numbers.
Okay, so what we're gonna do is, um, can we table this? Hear the other presentation and then bring it back?
Sure.
Yeah? Okay, so that motion is passed, so what we're gonna do is we're going to hear from our second, we're gonna hear from the Sheriff's Department. I'll give Susan a little bit of time to work some numbers and then after their presentation, then we will determine how we wanna distribute funds. Good? Sheriff?
Good evening, Sheriff Thomas with the DeKalb County Sheriff's Office. I'm here this evening to request funding for three different items. Uh, recently, the Sheriff's Office, uh, we're working on establishing a SWAT team. Uh, the guy, eight, eight of the deputies have been to SWAT training for that, so we're working on getting them outfitted with the necessary gear and equipment they need. Uh, a couple of the items are two tactical shields that are oftentimes used in SWAT callouts. I'll kinda gloss over everything and we'll come back and see if anyone has any questions on anything. In relation to the SWAT team, another critical, uh, piece of equipment that's needed is a communications, uh, system or inside the, the helmets that they would be wearing on these callouts. Uh, that consists of a microphone, earpieces, uh, which also serves as, uh, hearing protection for them and quick connect, uh, units that they can quickly switch over from one piece of gear, like a regular uniform like this, over to a SWAT, uh, uniform and outfit that they would wear for those callouts. So those first two items are, uh, directly related to the SWAT team that's, um, we're working on establishing. The third item is for a trailer. The Sheriff's Office has a gator, it was actually, came to us through the Department of Homeland Security. Uh, the county now owns that. We had also received a trailer with that gator and that trailer was used to store the gator, also to transport it wherever we would need it in the county. That trailer was in, um, barely operational, uh, mode. It was being stored and a windstorm came through and ripped the, the, um, the ceiling off of it. It was not in a state to even try to repair or work on. Uh, so now we don't have any way to, uh, store or transport that gator anywhere that we might need to use it. What, the way we've used that gator in the past is for, we, we've had incidents that are out in a farm field or back in a woods. Uh, it could be very large properties that have multiple buildings and complexes that we can't feasibly get our vehicles around to transport. You know, it could be investigating officer, it could be a detective or a couple of, um, patrol units that need to get back into certain areas. Um, wooded areas, like I said, or very large complexes that are just not feasible for a vehicle, but. So we would use that trailer to transport that gator out to some of these areas. Once we get there, then we can use that gator to transport personnel in and out of these different areas that it could be used. So those are the, those are the three pieces I'm here to, to talk about. Does anyone have any questions about that?
So as far as that goes, um, so just as the same questions we asked Brad is, um, as far as servicing for our TIF districts, which is SDI, New Millennium and American Heritage Village, who's, are you the primary?
Yes, the Sheriff's Office would be the primary responding agency to any, all, all three of those areas that you mentioned.
Okay, so if there was an incident that the SWAT team has called out to any one of those, it'd be you.
That's correct, yes.
I just wanna say for what it's worth, this one's very close to, to, to my mind right now. We did have a, have a active shooter last week at one of our sister plants. And, um, there's a shooting in the parking lot. They had to go looking for the shooter and, um, you know, I don't, I don't know in Mississippi if they had this equipment, but I certainly would hope that our folks would have that equipment available in that situation.
Auburn, the city itself have its own SWAT team or?
Yeah, uh, the Auburn City Police Department has a SWAT team, some surrounding counties have SWAT teams. Uh, so the way that works actually is it's, to go out on a, a SWAT callout takes multiple people. So they oftentimes work together, so we'll do a lot of training with the other agencies and help supplement each other. So it's very possible once the Sheriff's Office. So it's very possible once the sheriff's office SWAT team is up and running, that they would also, you know, go, it'd be a unified team effort to respond to that.
I just, I mean, we're, we already have one in DeKalb County. What's the benefit of another one?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good question. No, there's not really a limit. I mean, the Fort Wayne City Police Department could come up to SDI and respond to an active shooter situation. It depends on how long you want it to take. So, you know, when it comes to Indiana and police agencies, police officers have statewide jurisdiction. The boundaries are only kind of because of how they're funded. The Auburn City Police Department is funded by Auburn City, but won't hesitate to go anywhere else. But they're supplemented by Stewin County, by Allen County, Fort Wayne City. So again, it's just a longer response time. What this would allow is for these deputies that are on the SWAT team who are out patrolling during the day to have the gear, some of the gear with them and, you know, reduce that response time to minutes rather than it taking a little bit longer. So some of it comes down to, you know, how fast we can get a response, which is obviously important in, in many situations.
So this equipment would be in their squad car, the shields and the communicators?
It, I, I don't think the shields would be probably, but their SWAT team, their communication systems. You know, them getting outfitted would be with them, they would keep that equipment with them. The shields, it, it depends on which one. This request is for two separate ones. But I believe those would probably be stored in a SWAT vehicle that would be kept here in DeKalb County. But what, one of the deputies could do that is on the SWAT team is go get that vehicle and drive it to where it's needed and have it there, you know, in a very reduced amount of time.
So currently without a SWAT team on the sheriff's department, if you got a call for active shooting at, at say SDI, what would happen today? How would that all play out?
Uh, well, it kind of depends on the circumstances a little bit, you know, active shooter is kind of a broad term for many things. But in general, the closest officer is going to respond to that, which in this case could be Butler. You know, you may have a sheriff's deputy that's around the corner, you know, that's close already. But any, anywhere, doesn't matter if you're in DeKalb County or Stewin County, if there's an active shooter somewhere, the closest police officer is going to respond. So very likely it could be the Butler, Butler City Police Department. If it's still going active, then they're going to do what they can to locate that person. And every officer that comes is going to join that, that team and go from there. So by having, you know, the SWAT team established and them have more gear, it just, ultimately what it does is reduce the amount of time, the response time to getting people there with protective equipment that's, you know, going to make us more success, successful and safer and.
Currently have any vests?
Have vests?
No, currently have any of the shields?
No, no, the sheriff's office does not.
But you mentioned keeping them in a vehicle that would then be deployed. What, do you have, you got that? You have a vehicle?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
You have, you mentioned having a vehicle, so that, you know, a deputy could then deploy in that vehicle. Do you have the vehicle available? I mean, that's, you got a, you got an old squad car sitting around?
I'll be back in the future.
Exactly, that's my fear.
No, we have, we have a, a van that's going to operate as that for now. So again, you know, if we had an armored vehicle, same day in the future, that'd be great, but not trying to make it happen overnight. You know, deputies that are on the SWAT team need additional training. They've completed quite a bit. But the auditor had messaged me today and asked about a SWAT team. I said, well, we're in the process of establishing it. We do have the members of it, but we have a ways to go yet. You know, we're not going to, not going to happen overnight. Try not to ask for the moon, but bury essentials is what we're asking for today. And make that van work. That's what we're going to use to store the equipment. That'll get us, get them in the places they need. So making it work for now and we'll see what that looks like in the future.
What, the trailer, what exactly will you keep in there?
Well, for the most part, that would just function to keep the gator. Yeah.
Who are you, uh, getting the trailer from?
The trailer.
Was it Bridge Trailer? What? I see you had a Neo. I like that because it doesn't have the cables to trip over on the ramp door, which I was wearing all that you're already wearing, I wouldn't want to trip over cables.
Sure. This quote here is from Bridge Trailer. Out of Woodburn.
Just by chance that the Concord Fire Department look at Bridge Trailer?
Is there a chance what? I'm sorry.
Oh, he's asking Brad.
So we, so we can get a two for one type of a deal? Any more questions for the sheriff?
Yeah, I'm just playing devil's advocate here. What, could we come together with the city SWAT team as well? I'm just trying to.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I get what you're saying with, I mean, Auburn is Auburn and then the rest of the county is the rest, but is there something we can do to merge? That way everybody benefits?
I, I don't know what that means. What do you mean merge? Like merge what?
I mean, the way I'm understanding is Auburn has its SWAT team already and then we're going to have another one, so we're going to have two different teams. Is there any way we could merge the equipment or even the people?
I, I don't think that's feasible. I think that, you know, a lot of things were explored. There was actually a SWAT team in the past. They called it the Northeast Indiana SWAT Team. And that was several agencies on this one team. That doesn't exist anymore for, for, because it didn't work out. You know, what you have is, well, different agency heads. And when you join those together, then they're operating under who exactly? My deputies, the Auburn police officers, the Stewin County deputies, who's liable operating together? So what's more common now and, and what we are doing is they'll work together a lot, but either way. So they'll do a lot of training together, probably go to a lot of calls together. But what this allows is each one is controlled separately. But effectively, you're going to have the same thing. A lot of these things are going to be needed whether they were merged together or not, I think.
Like these shields, does Auburn, does anybody in Auburn have these?
I assume that they do because they've had a SWAT team for quite a while. So, yeah, it, it just comes down to, like I said earlier, I mean, a little bit of the response time. So that has been tried in the past and it just doesn't seem to, to work out very well.
So I guess it'd be very similar to fire departments.
Yeah, I mean, so just try and explain a little bit. How many deputies do you have total?
About 25.
So when you're saying you have a third of those are now trained for SWAT, so if you would have one group, you got, I mean, obviously you have to have a minimum, depending on the incident. How many SWAT officers you have. But if it's one individual team, then you're worried about are all those individuals on duty? And if they're not on duty, are they available to come in on their off time? So having two kind of separate, but that work together, you're, you're, you're increasing the odds that you're going to get a trained SWAT individual, just like Assistant Chief said, like, so Garrett, and we only have so many firefighters and they're not all available all the time. So we rely on the next department over or two or three departments to come over and help. And whether we would merge or not, we train together, we all sort of have the same general idea. It just sort of does help that you have, his group of deputies have a clear leader, Auburn has a clear leader. And so you, you kind of get that.
And I, and I think to some degree, the shields are kind of a basic, you don't have a SWAT team unless you have a, a shield. It'd almost be like a fire department sharing fire trucks, you know, so I think you'd run into problems a little bit with that.
I may. Only question I would have, are these, some of these things are pretty specialized. Were, were you able to get multiple quotes on anything or can you get multiple quotes on anything?
I don't have multiple quotes. I just talked to my SWAT team commander a little bit earlier today about the, the stuff that he did provide. He has done a really, really good job at always giving me the very best deals, scenarios, situations. He, he does a really good job at vetting everything and talking to many, many people about what would be the best gear, equipment, of the best materials. From my understanding, and this is the best deal that can be obtained for these, this type of equipment.
And that's, I'm not ask, I'm not asking this because I doubt that you brought the worst possible deals that you could get. But I, I think it might help from the Rita Melton Commission's standpoint to be able to have some additional, really for the, a record to show we've seen multiple options and, and it doesn't have to be the cheapest. But to be able to say, here, here are three options for the shields, here are three options for the trailer and the hearing, the, the communication system. And in my professional opinion, here's why we want this system as opposed to that system. I think it's kind of a due diligence item for the commission to be able to, again, not that anyone distrusts you
Yeah.
from the, the public standpoint of this commission to be able to say, we've looked at multiple quotes.
Well, what, what we did was looked at multiple options, multiple gear and equipment and multiple everything. So I can bring other options that I would then, that wouldn't, wouldn't be what we request.
Well, and it could even be the same equipment, but we gave a due diligence and is Bridge Trailer the cheapest to buy the Neo trailer from? It could be the same thing, just it's a best, best deal.
Best price.
Something I got to do in my world all the time is get three quotes.
Sure.
And, and probably most likely, Josh already did that.
I'm, I'm, I believe that he did.
Probably all sitting in a file.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, my only question is this, DeKalb Sheriff's Office, Illinois, not.
Yes, that was a missed print on that.
Okay, let's make sure they get it correct.
And just because I, well, I wasn't here last time, so my apologies. And I'm looking through this, this is for two shields, but nine communications.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
All right, so following, I think precedent with what we did with Concord is that we had them come back and present the additional bids in a second. Is there any other questions you've got for sheriff? Is there anything else, any mention you want from him?
Um, something I would want to think about a little bit, and really it's not for him so much as it is us, is I would say that this one potentially could even affect the American Heritage Village.
Oh, I think it does.
I mean, I drive by there and there's 400 cars there on a Saturday night, there's something going on.
I'd venture to say this one probably affects that one more than the other two.
Well, maybe.
In my opinion, just because I think you're dealing with bigger.
Bigger drunk crowds?
Bigger drunk crowds. Thank you, sheriff.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Okay, so any public from the, all the comments? Okay, great. So committee, so we'll have him come back in the next meeting and present alternative bids on it and then we can take it up from there. At that point, we should have a better idea of exactly where our finances are as well.
Okay, so for SDI and New Millennium, if I take the balance, we, what was that?
We're backtracking, right? We're, we're.
Yeah, so that, that one, we're tabling.
Make a, make a motion.
Let me make a motion to table that, please.
Move to table the, the sheriff department request until next meeting.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ares. Okay, we're going to table that. Thank you. Susan?
Sorry, Susan.
Okay, so if I take our current cash balance right now and if I would, at this point, just split the 69 whatever in half, then take 70,000 away from each for the $140,000 initial big fire truck payment, which would be next year also. And take away the hazmat and anything else that we have, like the little, I don't know, we have a sign still to buy for the Butler City. And just take away a few thousand for like legal and bonds and stuff that we need to do. Then you would have 517, 33705 in SDI, 39401920 in New Mill. And that would be before your revenue that you would get in '26.
Okay, so.
So you would not be going into the red.
So everything we appropriated so far, we're at, so we're going to, your best guess is we're going to be 517 on SDI, 394 on New Millennium before this.
That's including, uh, before the sheriff or before?
No, 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 before the Concord.
No, I put Concord in there. I split it 50/50.
Okay, so we've got plenty of funds in there, need one of them, so, yeah, so.
So you can do the split, not 50/50, you have plenty of funds no matter what.
How would you guys like to split? Any thoughts?
SDI owns New Millennium, so 50.
Fine with 50/50.
Motion?
Make a motion to split between SDI and New Millennium.
50/50.
50/50.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ares, there you go. Is that good for you, Susan? Anything else?
No, I think Zach will bring the ordinance back.
I'll bring, I'll prepare a resolution for the next meeting, but are you able to hold, are you able to get them to hold that funding or are you able to put? You have guys, do you guys have funds that you could put?
Okay, so as of today, the funding has been approved and we've determined how it's going to be split. We have to do the resolution and as soon as the resolution is signed, then we're able to start cutting checks. So our next meeting is.
Are you going to call a special meeting so you can get the resolution done? Otherwise, you're two months out.
So we're looking at two months out, our next meeting. Is that going to work for you? Okay, so could he do this? Could he contact them, find out the dates and then if it is an issue, then we can call a special meeting?
Up to you guys.
Yeah, you, you can. That's, you know, you can absolutely call a special meeting whenever you want. Please don't.
So, so if you could contact them, Polaris, and say the money's been appropriated, we can have it within two months, whatever our next meeting date is, so you know what that resolution will be and then we can issue a check within a week of something like that, a week-ish, right? Yeah, ish.
I do everything online.
Yeah. Okay, I'm, I'm sure that they'll work with you.
Brad, based on that conversation, will you also, it's just timeline, would you reach back out to Jason Deech and maybe this also this trailer company down in Woodburn to see if ordering a trailer to save some money, we've got a little time?
Um, so that was going to be kind of a question for the future. If I find something in the meantime that comes in below the number you guys have approved, is it okay to go with that? And then I don't know administratively what you guys have to do to change that resolution.
What we have done is we've appropriated it up to that amount for those two items. So if you can save the taxpayers some money, we would greatly appreciate you doing that.
And then you guys would just have to modify on your end.
We just, basically all we do is we issue no more than that amount of money.
I can absolutely reach back out to, to Deech Trailer Sales and have him either order a custom, a custom unit or if he knows that, you know, we're looking. I'm sure he would want our business and he could find something.
Yeah, especially now that it's approved, you, I mean, it's a, you're serious about ordering it, so.
Yeah.
Maybe worth a call to Bridge too. I mean, they're close and I've, I've talked to those guys, they're good folks down there.
Yeah, I absolutely can do that.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'll get ahold of Polaris, I'll take care of that tomorrow and then once I have a, a better timeline, I'll be in communication.
Okay, yeah, and you may want to even talk with the sheriff and see, maybe if we did two trailers, might give you a bigger discount too. Hypothetically.
I get along, I get along with him pretty good. I, I think we can talk.
Yeah, so what do we do to save the taxpayers? Yeah, so what do we do to save the taxpayers some money? We wanna do.
Yeah, he's going out for extra, for additional quotes too, so.
Yeah.
Double team him.
Perfect.
We can do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You.
Alright, is there any other business before the commission?
Yes, your budget. Your twenty-twenty-six budgets. So I had sent this out later last evening. And then I had afterthought. So, this twenty-twenty-six that I have proposed is mainly just to get our appropriations in our funds so that we have the approval to spend and we're not asking for additional appropriations. It's probably more of a bookkeeping thing on my end for what I need to do because you guys, when you do your, um, spending plan, that's when you guys are deciding what you're doing and what you're not doing. So, like, I can put this how I've shown you, that I've put it in there. And then just because it's in there does not mean that it's actually going to be spent next year. Nor doesn't mean it has to stay there. If something else would come about, I can always transfer and do all the bookkeeping part that I have to do with council on the backside. So, I don't know if you guys want to just approve it as I presented it, showing you what was in there. Or if you, I don't know, I don't, I don't know if there's ever prior, I don't know how they did the budgets 'cause we were just handed them.
So the spending plan is what we have to issue with the state. That's a, that's a requirement of the RDC for, which we've done.
Correct.
Twenty-five, okay. Um, do we have to do a budget as well?
Well, you need a budget.
I do. Do they have to approve it, I think is what we're asking?
Yes, that's, that's.
Okay.
Apparently yes, and it, the way it's historically been done, at least as far as, I, I know in the past, it was just handed and this was the budget. Um, and, I mean, the way, the way Susan does this is just to really account for all the funds that we have.
Right.
To make sure that they are spendable if we need to. However, if we don't put things on the spending plan and there's a, um, something that comes up next year, we have to amend the spending plan in order to spend those funds, which is not, not a huge deal. But yes, we need to approve, the commission needs to approve the budget.
And when do we need to approve this by?
Today.
Let me look at it real quick.
Because this is a budget, obviously if we don't, if we did spend something else, we can make changes to this.
So, this will go in however you decide. It will go in, it's a long process. And things get advertised by September, then council has to do a bunch of stuff to approve things and it goes to the state DLGF. So it won't be finally approved until, maybe even December, November for Lucky. So if, say, we have, like, for New Millennium, say we appropriate, we're asking appropriate seven thirty-nine, three seventy-four. If for some reason, when they do all their checking, that our funds are not, our fund won't have that amount, then they'll only approve it up to X amount of dollars.
So with the fundraiser request we did tonight, does that, is that accounted for in this budget?
No, because that will be done this year. That will be paid for in twenty-five.
From the twenty-twenty-five budget?
Yeah.
And that would fall, that would fall into miscellaneous expenditures?
Yeah, I'll do a transfer out to the appropriate account when it's time.
Yeah, but I mean, that's, so on this document.
Yep.
It's coming out of the miscellaneous expenditures? Okay.
Correct.
We have, look, is our spending plan have enough listed to cover? Request, I feel like we put a lot.
We did, I think we.
Didn't all come out.
We did one point five million for police, fire, hazmat.
Okay, so that should have covered the fire department, Concord, and possibly the sheriff then as well.
Yeah, because not all of that, what, seven hundred and some thousand of it won't even be coming out for the twenty-five.
For all good. Okay. Questions? Basically, what we're looking at is the blue on the side.
Yeah.
As proposed budgets. Any questions, concerns, thoughts? Motions? And you took these numbers from our historical plus what we've got coming out, that you know of.
Basically, I just appropriated the actual cash balance of what we have right now. So we won't spend everything, plus we'll still have full settlement that goes in.
That budget's basically taking our cash balance. And then we use it, we do. If you don't, we don't.
If we don't use it, it passes through, right?
It just continues.
Big things never.
It doesn't continue. It just, it goes back to the fund and then we have to re, that's why we budget every year. It doesn't just stay in that account and keep going. It goes back to zero at December thirty-first. So if you only approve me to appropriate, say, a hundred and ten thousand and twenty thousand, twenty thousand, thirty thousand, then if you want something else, there's not an approval to spend that. So that's why you do as much as you possibly can. So it is there. You're not asking for more monies in the middle of the year.
And then the county takes that and they plug it in their budget. Okay. Is that, yeah. Okay. So need a motion to approve?
Move to approve the twenty-twenty-six proposed budget.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any other business? Sheriff?
Um, Callan Dooley, Commissioner Dooley. Um, as the comprehensive plan comes to an end here in the next couple of months, I didn't know if you, it's more of a comment. If you guys will start looking at seeing what new TIF districts you wanna put in place as these ones expire to go with the comprehensive plan of the areas that have been identified as growth. So, just kind of a comment, um, something to look at too. Commissioners and the RDC work together on that and stuff. So as that plan is finalized in the next couple of months, we'll have identified areas that people want to have see growth into. Those growth areas might need infrastructure, might need a TIF district to help with some of that growth.
What's, what's the commissioner's appetite for us doing TIF districts?
Me personally, I'm not talked to the other two, I'm okay with doing it if it makes sense with the comprehensive plan. The other two I'm not talked to, I'm only speaking on my behalf here.
Okay, and, and what would you like us to do? Would you like us to look at the comprehensive plan and give you suggestions on what?
Yeah, I think that would probably be the best, since you guys are the ones that would manage them and you would see how it worked and all that stuff. And then we could work together and kind of figure out if the other commissioners are on board too. Like I said, I'm only speaking for myself here.
Of, of course.
Do you have any knowledge of things that are coming at us in certain areas of the county that we should be looking specifically at?
Um, not as of right now.
Okay.
But I know the comprehensive plan has areas, like, hey, these are areas that we would like to see some growth into. Um, I know like the airport being one of them, the, the airport's been very adamant about trying to develop that area south of the airport. Um, I don't know if American Heritage goes all the way down through there or not, but it might be something to look at, knowing that there's gonna be some growth there and just having a general idea of, here's the comprehensive plan, this is what areas of growth has been identified, how can you guys kind of work with that, that comprehensive plan and how the commissioners, at least myself, and maybe get the other ones to join, how we can all work together towards the comprehensive plan.
That'd be, maybe you know, maybe Zach knows, would that, would we do that like through a joint meeting, special meeting maybe, or something? Establish just a TIF area? Well, to, to, to talk with the commissioners and kind of review the comprehensive plan and, and talk through that a little bit, more than just interim little silos. Yeah, I mean, we, we could come up with, I'm not sure what the best.
Situation that works.
Approach, maybe it's.
Cause we say we would like them, but I think they're the ones that create it, correct?
Well.
Or something, it's kind of weird.
Redevelopment starts it with a declaratory resolution, it goes to plan commission, it goes to commissioners and then comes back.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, maybe what I'm asking for is an overstep.
Yes, a, a pre-step.
Yeah, yeah. But, I mean, it's important to have all the different bodies on board because we don't wanna, creating a TIF area is not cheap. It's not, it's not a simple one resolution and you're done. You're usually engaging Baker Tilly to do the, the financial aspect of it. Bond council is usually involved to help with establishing all of the paperwork involved. So we don't wanna start the process and have the commissioners say, or the plan commission say, nope, not interested. We don't wanna do this because it's.
Somebody has to say, yeah, we're interested, to get the other ones to say, yeah, we're interested. Someone's gotta start it somewhere along the conversation. But if you guys are like, yeah, I mean, we'd be interested, then I can bring it to the commissioners and say, hey, are you be interested in looking at these possibilities? And then we go to the plan commission, like, hey, this is something we're talking about, would you guys be interested? And if all three of us are like, yeah, we'd be interested, then we can go down that path.
Not reasonable.
But I think it starts here, that technically, by the process, right?
The, the process does.
Oh, yeah. But if you guys are interested, then I can bring it to the commissioners our next meeting and see if they're interested in visiting that possibility. Like I said, if this is just me talking, not talking as, as the commissioners, I'm talking as Commissioner Dooley.
Okay.
Looking at our, obviously that's your call, looking at our fund balances, if we don't establish some new TIF areas, we're gonna be meeting just to look at each other and.
Yep.
Say hi in the near future.
Yeah.
Any questions? I just wanted to bring up a comment. Thank you for my.
When you do create a new TIF, the twenty-five years starts whether you've got anything there or not?
No. Not until there's debt.
Pardon?
Not until there's debt.
So you don't, yeah, go ahead, Zach.
So if, if we establish it, oftentimes you establish one because there's a project going in and they want some funding.
Right.
So you start, the, the clock starts right then. If you are establishing one for future, uh, future growth, um, the clock doesn't start until that debt is issued.
Okay. Yeah, good. Thank you, Callan. Any other business? Nothing, nothing, nothing?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.